You should hear the Republican, just what your fans, one nation, under that, you can think of you know, they use that sort of.
All right, we'll start with public comments and Susan Porcelli has something to tell us.
Hello, good evening everyone, my name is Representative Susan Porcelli and thank you for letting me to speak tonight. I wanted to make sure that I'm being the board and everyone here in Kensington, an early warning about several bills that passed the New Hampshire Senate that will be coming over to the New Hampshire House. These bills have to do with what is being called eliminating certain, eliminating zoning restrictions at the state level. These bills would be very detrimental to a small community like Kensington. The New Hampshire Reusable Association would also immediately oppose these bills. I won't get into all the details with them, but back to them. Proceed to eliminate restrictive housing at the state level is not the way to update zoning at the town level. Kensington has a great tradition of being able to update their zoning laws with the input of all of the residents. So these proposed bills will severely negatively impact the local community of Kensington to have the ability to control your local zoning and development decisions for the best interest of the community. You know, your boards and your elected officials are best to act again within your local community to be well-equipped to make sure that land use and local zoning decisions are relevant for your community. And you've got the knowledge here in this small community to make sure that decisions regarding land use and development are well-thought-out and specific for your community. Now, these bills may have some merit to it, but doing this at the state level is not the way to address any type of zoning consideration. This is again being called restricted zoning and for example, one bill wants to eliminate lot size mandates, another wants to eliminate building moratoriums for whatever reason. Another bill seems to eliminate occupancy requirements. And there was another bill that would allow residential building in commercial zones. Again, there may be merit to these ideas. If there is, then the local community should be able to adjust their zoning laws specifically to address any type of issue. So over the next weeks, I'll keep you updated and let you know where, what the status of these bills are. They'll be heard first in the House. And there is a housing committee where these bills will be heard. I'm also working with the town of Hampton Falls to make sure, I represent Kensington and Hampton Falls. We're taking care of this small community. And we would like to make sure that we understand how to control growth and development that is best for our small communities that should not happen at the state level. So thank you for letting me visit this kind of situation.
Can I ask a question, is there a particular group or organization that's driving this bill?
This is not a partisan issue.
No, I don't mean, I mean, I mean, you know, like a housing group or some firm or something like that.
Well, we need to make sure that New Hampshire is a good place. You know, New Hampshire is a great place to live and many people want to move here. But the cost of housing is high and there is definitely a desire to be able to build more housing. So initially, several of the suggestions were make it easier for developers to work with the state. So if you need permitting, have one place to get all your permitting, make it easier to put driveways and et cetera. But now, these bills have really turned into eliminating what they're calling restrictive zoning. So it's at the state level that they're trying to address this concern.
But is it out-of-state people coming in that are trying to do development, is it?
Oh, the developers.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure exactly who the developers are.
Right.
But again, in the state, there's a, you know, we all know that there is not a lot of housing because people are moving here, especially here in Rockland County or Southern New Hampshire. But I'm not aware of the specific developer, but.
Because we kind of like it the way it is and we really don't want it to become downtown Boston.
I definitely agree. There's just very, there's a lot of concern for unintended consequences of some of these bills. For example, if you're going to have to put residential housing on top of commercial buildings, you may not have the required equipment to be able to service these buildings if you've got a limitation.
Yeah, and I think our residents need to understand the impact that that will have on their taxes. If all of a sudden, we got to dramatically upgrade services to meet this influx of unnecessary expansion as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I think things are fine the way they are. I don't mind private developers, you know, house here, house there, that's fine. But wholesale, you know, overhaul the community would be, you know, long-term impact will be devastating. You know, then we get the urban sprawl, which we really don't need, so.
Yeah, I definitely agree. And in addition to that, I'm trying to work with the Department of Environmental Services to provide an overall plan of water usage for Kensington, Hampton Falls, Exeter, Steed Brook. As you know, this small area has.
This whole southeastern region depends upon an aquifer. And as that is already under attack in northern Massachusetts, because they're all off the same aquifer. Over Newburyport and stuff like that, any of this other long-term development is just going to suck the well dry. I mean, we already had enough issue with Exeter when they built the dam, dropping the level of the aquifer in Kensington, that can fence bond by quite a number of feet. And second, you know, 250,000 gallons of water just in test. So it is a, it is a resource that is under attack and you know, if they want water, let them go to the ocean and get it, build their own purification plants and then truck it into their, to their tanks in their house to put it on. I mean, it gets to a point where it's just ludicrous and it will be in turn this, this part of the, part of the state into the desert because there won't be enough for anything for everything.
Right. Well, the common water usage is a very big concern. Super business involves several large projects. And we want to make sure, as you're saying, that there are data or report that shows for the next X number of years, if all of this development happens, what is the.
And Seabrook, a few years ago, periodically ran their well strike and they'd have to wait for the rains and stuff to build it back up. So overbuilding is, that's going to create these problems, so there are two. We stay nice and residential where we are and stuff, but you know, get into the, the major housing complexes and stuff like that, it'll be a major problem. It's just not enough water to go around. People have to realize that.
Well, thank you for your support and I'll work closely with you on these specifics of the bills when they get over to the House to provide online testimony and possible in-person testimony. And as the more people they hear from in small towns, I think the better it outflowing that.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions on this subject? Did you want the numbers, though?
Yes, that did come up. I provided them to the board and I could send out additional details. But they're not, they haven't crossed over to the House yet, so that might be important. And of course, bringing up the impacts of these bills. Thank you very much. I'll be trying to.
Anyone else for public comment? I guess we're ready for, to change faces here to come to Board of Health.
I have a question. I'm representing some people from these, and I'm the board of Kensington, Exeter. Should I speak now or wait till the end?
Uh, if you can keep it within five minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Do another public comment.
My name is Gary Jefferson and I have a seating camper over at, yeah, thank you very much, greeting camper. I've been there since the year 17. There are several of us over there that are senior citizens that have the general units. I can speak directly from my experience on the tax situation. And there are several others that have discovered the same problem. I was overtaxed from the moment I got there until I discovered it last year when I did more research on what I was doing the tax floor. I was assessed from my unit of being 10 years newer than what it was because the people who came in to assess the amount never contacted me directly or asked how old my unit was. So I was overtaxed in the past seven years on my unit. There are several other people over there that said, if you find anything out when you go over to the town, please let us know too, because they want to research theirs too. I can give you information that I brought with me if you could research it and determine if there's anything that can be done. I was told when I called that it was only one year they would be able to assess. I don't think that's fair because what they, a company that was paid for by the town of Kensington brought in to assess the evidence. And the gentleman that I spoke with, they came up to talk to me last fall, did not have a clue about the values of campers. Not clearly. If I tried to talk to him, he kept on referring to COVID, how prices had gone up during COVID. And I tried to explain to him that that is not anything that was relevant to this.
Kathy, is there something we know about?
I think I've spoken to Kathy before. Yeah, I have been unable to get out here in a state. That's why I wasn't able to get out here and sit there and now. And I wanted to speak directly to the council so that I could see if there was anything that could be done and if I could pass that information on to other people who were concerned about whether their evaluation should have been properly or not. I mean, 10 years, that's a lot. You know, big difference in the piano. And I'm still thinking that it's too high on the December evaluation, but we'll have to discuss that. Should I, I mean, you have my information.
Follow up with Kathy and she'll answer us and.
Okay. That sounds good.
See where it goes.
Yeah. Okay. I know just that it was in your limit until we had a big meeting last fall, they said. Yeah, but it wasn't anything we could control before the person that someone came in independently, we had nothing to do. All right, I'll pass that on. Thank you very much for your time.
I guess I'll look for a motion to convene the Board of Health.
I'll make a motion to convene the Board of Health.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're now the Board of Health. Don't be like your friend. So is there someone here who can speak to the 34 Lamprey Road in Septic Way?
My name is Hugo Fadison, the subject designer. I did bring some hot copies. I don't know if you guys have seen, didn't expect to make a big live. There was a few extra cars of the universe.
We think we have lots.
Do you guys have problems? Okay. Do they want to live or die? Say, have one of those. Thank you. Wait. So very quickly, two bedroom house with basic, you know, about a year or so before my client bought up. They're not going to keep up in Dyson, Dyson, they're going to design. And I'm here for my loss from the mall. I don't know how to run this. Two bedroom existing house, a lot of weapons out back. They have a failed system. They've been pumping it over the winter. What I did is I designed a pump system coming out of the same same location of the house, put it into a pump chamber, septic, septic tank, and pumped it up to a strong pipe system, the highest point of the lot. We tried to stay away from the weapons as far as we could and try to stay away from the wells best we could also. As a result, we either have to have some waivers, even have to ask for a waiver from the state for the septic tank being too close to our weapons. And we also have to ask for some local waivers. Well, that's just the way. The local regulation is supposed to be 75 feet from heavy weapons to 5 or 6 and we are.
66.
Yeah. Now, I didn't know if there was, if all of this. Here in full sunlight. Are you 66? You don't need 66? Yes, it's equal to 66. In addition, the septic tank can be too close to the lines. So septic tank and a leak field. We, the state requires 30 and we're 39. I believe the town requires 75 from all weapons. We did the best we could. And Mike Cuomo looked at it over and we thought it was also a solution for what we have to deal with. The seasonal line water table is 13 inches typically. Kensington requires 18 inches minimum. Can't change that. And Kensington also requires 35 feet from lot lines and regular ways. And the, we're at the state minimum 10, the regular way and the lot line. So I just believe the state recently changed that to minimum 10. Two, two feet to seasonal line water table. Kensington requires four feet for all systems. So we did design it at the two feet. And it is a failed system typically. State allowed two feet anyway. Excuse me, where is this system at? Where is the field? We don't say anything exactly sure. I showed the septic tank, the septic tank was, they had somebody go up to a inspection before they bought the house. The septic tank is over near the lot line. We kind of extended it, you know. And I believe the, the field might head towards the weapons, but they were unable to determine where the field was. I think they had to chisel the top of the tank to get into it. It's still.
I remember it was.
Should they see where it was located? Was the guy, yeah, they couldn't, they never figured out where the field was. It was vacant for a year or so too, so maybe they, they said it was unknown. What is this from Mike Cuomo?
Our inspector, he does say that it really improved very, very in line with the unhealthy situation. And as a fourth approval of this plan, I think there's no better. Do we know where the well is on the property in its store?
Excuse me?
Where the well is.
Yes.
On the next, on the next property, where you would be putting the septic on the, you know, the property line?
The well on the above is property is way at the back.
Thank you.
Yep. And I checked across the street to the wells, way far away also. And then to the right of that property, there's nothing. Thank you.
But you had anything else? You know, you had anything else to.
Well, I mean.
Basically, it's all, all on Mike Cuomo's.
I mean, with Mike's, Mike's approval, I say it's fine.
Right.
I would approve.
And Mike's tough, basically, you know, he's.
He knows what he's talking, knows what he's doing.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. And he's right there with the, you know, I actually have a son, so he's saying he's working with me. And they went over, you know, they flipped it together and this is the bulk of what you can do.
When you say the tank was almost in the lot line?
Say it again.
The tank was, the tank itself?
Yeah.
It must have been a lot of light?
Yeah, it looks like it's about five feet away.
So it's moving further away from the water?
Oh, absolutely.
In the field, he knows what the field is happening, he'll be on the next project.
Yeah, it's nothing but blossoms we were putting. And they'll end up in the pump system, but we still have something that works.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Is that motion?
Yeah.
You have a motion, so. I guess it's to grant the waivers. Is that the, what you're hearing? It's to grant the waivers, is that what the motion may be? To grant the waivers, yeah, I am.
Yeah, we're looking to get some waivers. I'm sorry.
I don't know, I, yeah.
We're requesting the waivers, going to region.
No, I, I realize what they're requesting, I'm just a little concerned about the, you know, the weapons there and the whole setup and all that, but.
This is the land of, yeah, of no, no alternative.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that. All right, so I don't think I motion to grant the waivers.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it was a granted. Thank you.
I'll send you a letter of objection if I can go to my own.
Oh, that's, thank you. You got a motion, or a motion to exit? Board of Health?
I'll make a motion to exit Board of Health.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on our agenda, which we probably should have done initially, is welcome to Sarah Hatton, can we, I mean, select motion?
Welcome to the party.
Go for his apartment, it's now.
Uh, chief. Oh, please. Now, I can reserve a car, yeah, you want to, looks like I gotta buy a car here. Turn to, the turnaround to get these cars, probably six to eight months when I order it. So I'm looking to get approval, give it a share. With the budget, I can get the line items back in my freezer so I can use that line item to get a price to lease, which has no interest when we lease it, the good price is, well, the other cars, we took them out of the line items at cruiser, so we had to take yours on. Well, I say, we put the first deposit down, the cruiser revolving fund, in the details, what are the car? Again, I don't have a timetable on it, so generally, it's, it's a couple of months to get the car, it's a couple of months to get the car outfitted. So we're probably looking at the fall anyway, if I've already ordered it now. In the long term, whatever, Joe, if I, the goal is always to keep it consistent to buy cars maybe once a year at some point. And that COVID kind of made that mess, we had to buy four cars at once. So I'm trying to get also on that cycle, just get to one car a year instead of coming here and buy four cars at once. So that's the goal, so it could be a permission that by the start, you'll get the price of the car. I'm going to go with your angle again, because that's going to be out and consistent, you know, we can interchange the parts and a lot of them, the outfit of the car, so you ought to recommend that, if that's okay with you.
Do you need our permission at this stage?
Oh, yeah, I was trying to be a little bit transparent about what I'm doing. So I have a person.
And that's, that's all I'm trying to do, which is tell you, kind of leave it on what my thought is and get any questions or.
Well, basically, though, you need, you need the cruiser.
Yeah, I'm talking about, or it's a place, but it's not, it's just not what it takes.
You know, unfortunately, this car, possibly four, if you get five years out of the car, this car, that's a long, long time. They just don't last. They run longer than they get miles, so it's just a double mileage.
Well, at some point, time, it doesn't pay to, you know, throw good money at it on a bad situation, so it's better to look for, yeah.
That's good. I'm just, I'll explore if you're part of some, I don't want to do any purchasing.
Yeah, I'm good.
I just asked a question. What happens to the ball that we have tipped it up to be started?
They, they, they trade then, so. And I can be trading that one. They, they're really worthless because you got to strip everything out of them so that everything kind of just gets stripped out and they're just a beat-up car. People, some people like to buy them, but they're really not. You know, if it was something worth it, I've talked to Jeff, we've talked before, right, that car was worth the one with the fire pot, but it's a Dodge Charger, which is.
Yeah, and the, 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 you'll still get them, no, they'll hold them.
Yeah.
You know, they'll go to.
They're the box, not, you know, you can use, I don't think anything, you know, hard or anything. You know, because that's a Charger, we divide it to angle, obviously, like the cages and stuff are different, but at this point, this will be the last Dodge Charger we have, so all the cars will be Durangos. So we buy, other properties are swapping out the same. So the initial cost of that was the big, the big cost, but that is the swap.
Yeah, they, they get them a Dodge and you get a Dodge and if somebody else up there, they'll, they'll pick them up.
Usually they give us a Ford, right?
Yeah.
Don't give us any good purchase.
Right, right.
But if you could look at, I'll just pull that next week, I don't have some prices later.
Why not?
Next thing is, a couple weeks ago, we're down three guys, three, I thought, full-time guys, and we're down, we're back up to two more still down and full-time guy right now because of an injury. But we're pretty much good with staff right now, so we're probably, for all three weeks of bullet. Last thing is, and I don't have to count, you guys, the answer on building bridge for that project. So I'm going to reach out to you until, and see if I can get an idea of what they're thinking, because obviously.
An idea of what they're thinking, because obviously, uh, the second part of the bridge, so fourteen feet wide. So I'd like to have a meeting with everybody that lives up there, because once they put those trucks out there for the trees, it's gonna be tough to move and get around them, which would like to create. Uh, maybe opportunity, and again, I talked to Jeff, and we've been working with the fire department, too, working with us, um, using their data. If we actively transport people around them, they could park the cars at the bottom of the bridge while that construction's being done during the day. And we can help transport them back, well, with the, with the gator.
Yep.
Um, we'll give them a call, another call, maybe just kind of, uh, go back to, we'll probably get time table on that, and we can have a meeting with. Send like a, probably everybody down here, you know, if they have a question of how that's gonna work, because if they walk, they look like a crane, they're not getting anything.
Right.
Is there a select person who wants to be in the office? For meetings with these guys and just.
My, I'm gonna be away for, on vacation.
I have to go to, I have to go to you until, I, I don't wanna be there until I see the, idea when they, they'll think of the project's gonna go, and. I don't see it happening too soon, but sometimes, you know, you're into a call, something like, you know, like, I treat guys down, they stop to talk to the.
That's what I'm worried about, so.
Yeah. I'll be to go to Papal, Papal, after we get, uh, tomorrow, somebody will mail, see if you can give me a, a ballpark, if they have any idea, and. I'm, I've been working, uh, the, the, I think the lower part of the bridge, we can shut down the road, and people are still there on, and it's not, we got still a small road. Um, once they put the bridge, it's out to those trucks, it consumes most of the road.
Right.
That's it.
You know?
I'm sorry.
You know?
I'm still listening. I have nothing to report, everything's good. It's busy, uh, the permits are, applications are coming in, uh. So it's back, it's about everything.
It's gonna be good.
Uh. Follow up with what we discussed before. Before meeting, finally, what's going on with this? Again, uh, there should be no more going up, that, on there, other than what the chief asked for, today. You have to run the fire office system. Which I believe, um, might have been, you know, they were electorally affairs there. Over the last week or two, couple of weeks, so. Other than that, I'll check on that. And, um, that's all.
Alright.
Yeah.
Uh, for the fires side, I don't have anything. If you want me to dive right into the E O C, I can. E O C, uh, the radio containment object is still going on. Um, we are waiting for more parts, and I'm waiting for the state to actually come and install the radio. The radio, I should say radios. Um, so, once that happens, then hopefully we'll be top of running. Uh, that's it for E O C. And have you ordered the radios? Uh. Over the fire department?
Fire department?
Yes. I didn't place that, I'll place that. Uh, change the seat. And fill this out, yeah. Now it's just up to, you know, what, it was notorious to still getting any radios, so. I'm still waiting for the portables that we ordered, like, last year, months ago, so I'm still waiting for those, but. The order hasn't been placed, so we're moving forward. Alright. Mm-hmm. Right.
Um, March seventh, a couple weeks ago, I experienced high winds in Kensington and the surrounding seacoast areas. Uh, gusts over fifty miles per hour brought down several trees around town, resulting in power outages and temporary closures with wild pasture and muddy bond groves. Uh, half of the power lines were rehoned, uh, logs and debris were cleared and disposed of to the town right away by Matrix Construction. Uh, totaling, um, twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Um, also, with the passing of the twenty twenty-five, uh, road reconstruction award. Working on, uh, getting a, a specification slash scope of work requirement, and I'll get that before. You guys, uh, the next meeting for your, uh, review and approval, so, so we can get out the, uh, request for patrol, patrols over the, uh, B or. Road work. And that's it from the road department.
Other than the fact that you shaved it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I figured, uh, changed the spring, so I ought to clean it up a little bit.
I mean.
Next month is the annual tax league that the town has. As of today, there are thirteen I V passes. And this cabinet has to remember that if you, someone, you three sides, you're saying that you know that. To happen, right now it's eight percent for the unpaid, and it goes up to fourteen percent after going. Is the dollar, you know, in the, Catherine has. You know, hoping before that date, which is now, that there will be some that will come in. Just the one, of two.
Alright, so you just need signatures on this?
Yeah.
With licenses. Far into, uh. What she just spoke of.
Yeah.
Being most first, it was, you know, I mean, I'm.
Okay, that's a new office, good, if that's okay, yeah.
And we said, I think that's everything.
It's, uh, it's what I mentioned in the rest of the board, and I will be out of town, you know. Twenty-sixth of March. And back thirty-first. March, so. I would have myself, my phone with me. So I just, I will be out of state, so, but I. Yeah, there's somewhere. And I will have my, uh. Home with me, so I have to be contacted, feel free to give me a call.
Alright. Uh, at this point, we're up to new business. Kathy, who can talk to the, to use the town hall, or the Universalist Church, unmute everything?
Uh, Steve is here, okay, for the, um, energy committee? If you wanted to put me there, Bob?
Thank you. Whatever.
It's on, it's on the, it's on, for me, Linda, he has a couple things.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
The choice. Uh, Kathy, the energy committee chair. So the letter that I sent Kathy. Uh, when you guys, uh, rule of the board, is the letter of intent, this is the board recommending we write upon the interview, to, to, like, on the, with. For the solar panel project that we're doing on the town hall. Uh, it's pretty standard, they just asked for it, and we forgot to do it last year, and it didn't happen, and we didn't get back to it, but. They asked again last week, so I put together a document that I just need for us to take away, and it's signed, I'm signed with.
What is, what are we signing?
It's that letter of intent that we are over in terms of, it's a non binding, it's.
It's non binding.
Yeah, no, we are going to use that once the department releases the files for the, for the.
Okay. And there's no word, we have one of that's. Whether the positive energy is gonna.
No, uh, the, the update, yeah, the update, someone was supposed to have the kickoff meeting in April. Um, early April, but we pushed it back to May at least, because the costs are still. We don't, we don't have them.
Yeah, okay.
They, they've been. They're not canceled, they're in Lenoir, like, going. Uh, they think that they'll be coming back, that's why they're optimistic, that like, may go up for us. But we'll not see.
Alright. So you, you say Kathy has a letter that we need to sign?
Yeah, I'm very thankful. Yeah. Um. Is this just the draft you want us to have, or are you gonna sign us?
Depends, I mean, it's pretty. Or, you know, there's not much in there, other than we need to go with them, and it's not, not leaving them, the select will just not put with the group, the final contract anyways. So there's not, i- it's just a, something to feel there about us, and, yeah. They, they've already done a lot of work for us, for creative, uh, structural analysis, there is the energy assessment, and all. Uh, they, they did a lot of helping for us, helped create the, the ground also. So, it'd be nice for them to feel like, we know how about our express work. And then meanwhile, like, we even were update, uh, from the interview committee, so we met with the Grange press team. For two weeks ago. Uh, we did a, just a walk through the range to see if it would be feasible to electrify it, and bring a few pounds for their space, because then they'd be able to. Cool in the summer, and also keep it running for winter long. Uh, it seems like a very feasible project. Which starts with the, pre-energy assessment that we can get from them to insulate. And then from there, we'll see what they can do, or what seems feasible. Um, not much, more than that, just an exciting project if we can take it off.
And you just need three signatures on this?
Yes.
Do you need a give or no, or just a single button?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'm gonna, glad to mention.
Well, and then, once I get that bill, uh, from you, Kathy, we should be able to, that's the last thing that they want to.
Okay.
Um, this, once they have that, they're gonna preemptively run the unit bill assessment, the interaction assessment. So that is something that units will, or the utilities have to do whenever there's a new generator that's applying to, uh, connect to the grid. The good news is that we. Now, I can't put, on purpose, uh, size the system to be exactly the maximum allowed. Twenty-five kilovolts for a three face, or a little, for, uh, just a three face building. Uh, that qualifies as with the simple utility interconnect competition, which is both free and expedited. So they are going to start, uh, because there's, again, it's not binding, and it's just a matter of when they start, they have sixty days to complete it, so if they can start it early. And then they get approval early, they can swing for different funds, we can immediately, next day, even, uh, start our project. Not when they can be thrown, uh, we don't need it, it's just a form.
Is that it?
Yes.
Did you have any, um, from the net metering, the energy metering, did you have any?
Oh, uh, yes, so I can actually talk about that, because, I mean, energy, you have to go back to us a little bit. So there is a program called state group net metering, so group net metering traditionally is used by residential customers to get a, or send a, or just back to the grid. Uh, then the level up from that is called group net metering, where residential customers can group multiple, um, utility, uh, accounts, so neighbors, for example. And do, it's called group net metering, you know, we do a lot, a percentage of what you generate, over generated to each of these accounts. Uh, that's if someone is generating more than we can produce, for example. And then instead of all that, the E C program, where you can do that at a state level, where a solar farm. That is within the same utility region as a town. Can do group net metering for the town, essentially give us cheaper electricity. Um, it doesn't impact community towers, so we, we do it if we want it, however, there is one strong requirement, which is that it can't yourself already be a group net, uh, a net metering customer. Or not yet, but if we put solar panels up on the roof, then it'll lead to a smaller crisis. Which would make sense, because we'll be generating more electricity than we need. Uh. Sorry, we're not gonna be generating more electricity than we need, but it's already, we're taking, uh, advantage of net metering programs, so we're not allowed to take the, group net metering program that is not, group net metering arrangement that is not. So, we can talk to these companies, and at the next time I meet, we'll, we'll talk about this, see if there are companies that would want to give us quotes. And what we want to know is the contracts, right, so if we can go into a contract, where we can exit as soon as we get our solar panel set up. Maybe we can get cheaper electricity for six months, a year, however long it takes for us to put our system on. Uh, but if they say that there is no way to back out for a couple of years, then obviously we're not gonna do that. Uh, we'll also explore other accounts within Kensington, because. We're going to net meter the town hall, which is the largest by far, but there's a chance that we can use some of the others, there's a handful, I think there's like ten or twelve. Accounts that we have in the town, so it's possible we can do the other level. Well, we'll see if it makes sense effort to, to savings ratio. Uh. Okay. We'll give you an update when we have our permission.
Right, so, thank you. Now we're ready for the permit?
Okay. Sorry. So we're gonna go to, having to use the town hall.
Awesome.
This is for the Universalist Church next door, they're gonna be, um, they would like to use the town hall for a gathering. Um, like an open house, they said it's probably gonna be about a hundred people.
You knew these all the time, we could come out and see.
And it's a Saturday, um.
Saturday morning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The seventeenth of May.
Ten to twelve, yeah.
There's the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to. Prove the permit.
What we're waiting for.
Prove town hall use, to prove. Town hall used by Universal Society, as it is on May seventeen, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to twelve PM.
You have a second? All those in favor?
Aye. Alright, so we'll get a sign here, huh?
And the next one is for, in open air assembly, for. Ninety-eight things through. I don't know if you've read this one yet. Uh.
It's for daycare. I'm doing.
Yeah.
All of us.
We, we are, too.
Okay.
We're setting up, we have a couple of details, so they, they said there's about seven violent families coming. So we're gonna set some calls up, probably, so the office, they got a department here. Uh, they're locked down, so, uh, we are. I think that's what people.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the open air assembly for. Uh, nature and nurture building center. On April fifth, twenty twenty-five, ten AM to twelve PM, that is, that may need entry roads. Um. And. As far as, uh, no street parking. Uh. So. I mean, I said a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Kathy, can you send me the information?
Yes.
I didn't, I think I got it, but I don't know where.
Okay.
So it's on, on, some part.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, some. Yeah, we're, we're. Sometimes it's difficult, heavy, weigh five pounds, it seems like.
We have. We have any time to excavate?
Um, yeah, this is for the Welch's, it's, um, they're usually here, um, at ten. For their gravel.
You can make the motion. Off that, I think. Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh. Approve the tent to excavate for Maple of Lot Thirty. It's the Belt property.
You have a second?
Okay.
What the Welch's property?
Welch's, Welch's property, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just signed, we do.
Thank you. They also received, um, an additional cart, um, request from my con room. We do have like a small business there, so it would be just for residential use only, the cart, they had their son, I mean, come down, and his family.
I'm sorry, motion?
Uh, motion to approve the show card for residential use only for everybody on the road.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
The road permit for Kensington Elementary School, six dot one, that about twenty-five?
Um, yeah, they also sent us a check for this order Kensington trust, I just have to get a roll of the trust members. It's not, um, you know, we don't take their checks, so we just have to get that checked. Okay. Okay.
Do you treasure the dollars?
Sure. Are you the Alex for Drake? Oh, sorry. That'd be great if you don't, okay.
Catherine, do you have any more information on that road race? I have no additional contact, I'm, anyway.
Okay, Alex is here.
Okay.
She's, she, pardon me, do you mind looking to that one? Yeah, well, what information do you have for me?
Um, where and what are you doing, do you need fire department involvement? Because I require a detailed, whatever apparatus they need to assign to that.
So this is our fifth annual case, the first two were virtual with all of it, so this is our third. Real race, um, so the same route that we did last year, so it's outside our park and you take the left, um, I'm not great with all the roads, so.
That's okay, I'm not even here too, so, um.
So leave, I leave the turn in the tunnel, then head on the car through, and then we're leaving the car from the car and back, okay?
For the five. So, um, last year, I think we were probably on the road for an hour, um, from about Manhattan to ten AM on Sunday. Um, and the, the race timers was pretty good about letting people through right now until when the race starts, they can drive right over the tire. And even, I mean, even, it's really just the one mile, but it's a decent amount of congestion on terminal. Um, once in the five K is really underway and they'd be pretty good about letting cars through that needed to, so.
Okay. And if you say that adds fire department involvement, please tell us, is that only one person?
I, because I went to formally serve this, like the first week, actually had a bunch of the fire department volunteered in. So we, so we didn't do that last year, so we just, the PTO did that.
Okay.
Um, I will find out if, um, going about, um, close with, so I can, okay, you know.
Okay.
I can, what? Thank you. And I, I'll email you something on that, which is about. Uh, yeah, and that's, that's easy, so typically that is coordinated with the police, to be sure we have the, the detail on the range.
Okay, very, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
You got a motion?
Uh, actually, for the use of town roads, for Kensington PTO, groundhog road race, um, June first.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have another road, the road, the road race. Six fourteen twenty-five.
It's all timers, um, yearly request. And I do want to achieve that as well. Did you get contact on one?
Nope. I seen.
That's gonna be over.
Just saying, I saw the permit.
Yeah.
And since we're a little bigger, so I'm thinking that we probably have to be enough.
Okay, very, um, so I can forward, email away.
Okay.
And then just maybe get him, I'll not give touch.
Yes, please. So we should not sign, or should we sign at this point?
Um, you could, you could approve it pending fire department, um, some contact with the fire department and that is like his request.
Alright.
If that's number three?
Sounds great to me.
Okay. Did you all set stuff?
Yeah, they're all, they, they're all, so they're, they're, I, I think they have a fire department, yeah. Because they leave a little lot of, like, second, but it's, it's short too, it's another, should you, maybe.
So motion for the permit for the use of town roads for the regular, all centers in England, on June fourteenth, pending upper bowl from part.
Second, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yep. Very happy, this would be.
Thank you.
Yes, we had to adjust it, it was the, the food, it was a little bit.
You know, I suppose, just had a, for any, for, for.
Yeah, that's what they want from them, they, they got a, they used to, they used to stop at the country road, but and they exchanged, they wanted to talk in the air, so.
They did, it was hard to, they could.
Yeah, so that's where they're gonna stop. You're starting to be a little fire.
Some appointments for the rect committee, Susan Swales. We just need a motion for that?
Yeah. Uh, motion to appoint Susan Swales, I think, and for recreation and social freedom.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. It's not.
Can you, sure, if you can hear me? Catherine?
Yeah.
I know where you were, possibly, but my two points. One, I believe, who are eager to go.
They are.
I think they are, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think. I don't, I don't, I'm trying to.
No, um, we think two to three minutes, and the board will decide when we need to sign them afterwards. Um, I think that you.
Going, going for, I just want to, uh, let the board know that I will be out of town the twenty-sixth through the thirty-first of March. So I will have my phone with me, I'll have, uh, my, uh, laptop, so I'll be able to, you know, get email and stuff like that, but. So I'll be out of town, or even on the twenty-sixth, I'll be back the thirty-first, thirty, thirty-third, thirty, thirty-first.
I think they have an awesome, do you know, Oscar block?
You have those?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good to be on.
Nice meeting you.
Uh, Sam.
In standard. Little band work, you know, we, we, you want to see, right?
We got trees up the main. That was, it's a firefighter, DMT.
The last names for women to the Connecticut Fire Department, for Douglas and Sandra. Um, Douglas is the DMT and firefighter, and Sandra is the DMT. There are no numbers on this document.
They were formerly of, uh, Chase.
Please.
They promoted us.
Uh, motion to approve the appointment, uh, to fire departments, Douglas Osterlin and Sandra Rogers Osterlin.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you need to sign on to anyone?
Um, I'm gonna get that for you, if you don't mind, I'm gonna have to sign off. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you do, saying I'll have to be meeting, pretty good, still see you in a minute. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Is there any, any information about any upcoming drills received or announced yet or?
No, not yet. So we just, uh, hey, we're, just playing, yeah, the normal paper on show. Yeah, the normal fourth quarter paper, we were late for me. Sorry.
Okay, there's two elderly intentions, uh, they have qualified under the town's, uh, updating qualifications. And if you just wanted to make the motions, um, from the happenings, um, for those powerfuls, if you have any questions about it. Anything that didn't, so.
You make a motion. They call, right, fine.
Yeah.
Was there two on here?
Yeah, yeah, two separate ones, great.
So, uh, I will make a motion to grant, uh, allow the exemptions for, uh, MAP eighteen, plot twelve, H twenty-five A. And also to grant a, uh, a little exemption for, uh, MAP eighteen, plot one to dash four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Where we sign your passes, yeah, motion passes, uh, I don't know, where do we sign this?
Yeah, on the backside.
On the backside, yeah.
Yeah, on the back of the front bleach.
Back on the front.
The first, first, second, yep. And then the same for the other one. You can sign it.
So, are you gonna type the name?
I will. In vain.
Are you in Baiden also?
I will.
And.
Here. And then. Actually, really, you guys are gonna sign up.
That's okay.
There are two signing places, right?
Sorry?
There are two, basically, on the line.
Yep. The, the, uh, the front one, right here.
One, I would assume.
Okay, you guys, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think you guys, okay.
Thank you. Um, the next is a discussion about the MOLI contest and whether we're working with extended, we didn't do the, um, the bids back in the fall.
That one we usually do.
Yes.
And, um, he asked if we would not extend it for one year. He's been a paid contractor for the past two, three years. Um, he did increase it twice a little bit, um, but it's not.
Yeah.
Something seven percent or something like that. Do you have any obligation for that to hold? Um, Ken, you do have the contract, the ability to extend it, okay. By usual.
You don't write it, can I, the other side lines, what side of disaster?
Right.
Things.
Right.
Is there an obligation that we have to hold?
Anything over a certain amount, but it's under the board's discretion. Some purchasing policy, yes, but it's the board's discretion to extend it, contracts, they feel.
Alright, so we just need a motion?
Yeah, to extend it for that amount, um, for another year. Okay, the bottom, yeah.
There's a lot of stuff to sign today.
There wasn't a lot of points to sign. We still have more.
I know.
These are not, uh, there's just one more, that's a motion, um, for the payrolls, the payrolls, for the apartment house. Um, and then the rest is just payroll and bills. So we're almost done. So we're almost done.
There's a, there's a lot of motion yet, possibly, uh, they're increasing the, uh, the long contract because we didn't, it's pretty likely to be, that's followed by these parts, so, okay, it stands. Well, you know, so they're giving us a decent deal, seven percent increase.
But this would be the same, uh, same vengeance for them, right?
Right.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that would, that would be fine to me.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion.
Motion to approve, um, suspension of a moving contract for one year to your upper landscaping, the price increases to eighteen thousand five point eight two forty cents.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there an update from the public safety building unit? Jeff, or, what, an update on the building committee?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So, um, we had a first meeting, uh, it was a good meeting. Uh, we went over, reviewed all the old information that Kathy had given us for letters, the needs of the whole departments. Um, discussed, you know, what we need and what don't need. Um, surprise Kathy, we need to come to you and have you reset out the letters to the property owners that we, we like, so. Um, surprised, you didn't know that was coming, but now you do.
I just been following with the two today, you were busy with local machines.
Yeah. I was looking to face over. Surprise. Um, our next meeting is, uh, April third at two thirty at Firehouse again. Just to discuss letters going out and, um, updating our letter of problems in the station and stuff from the former fire chief. And, um, that, that's it. Just kidding.
Is the, uh, the lot that's on, the house on front of red, was, one of them, well good, last year or two years ago, when everyone was last booked?
Yep.
Is that still available?
Uh, I don't know that. We're gonna send a letter out to that one. Um, I think we're gonna send a letter out to, um, Harold. The moderator, um, who we are gonna send one out to the locations. Um, there was another property, I didn't forget the main chief was just out in the firehouse, but one of the chains, always, still in water, so we're gonna have to look that up. And previous owner, and I think that was, it was it. If there was any other ones, I might be missing that in two, but.
Great. Good. Anything else? No. Okay, any payroll forms, Kathy?
Yeah, it's just a motion for, uh, some board members to sign payroll forms for apartment heads. And that's all I got.
You can make the motion. I'll second it.
So to authorize one board member to sign all pay sheets on behalf of the board.
What board member? Wants to be the one signing?
That's a motion. Yeah, sure. Board member. Of the.
Okay.
So the motion is for me to, um, to, oh, sorry, I'll sign for the board.
I'll sign for the board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I sign all of these right now?
Yeah. Okay, great, great. Um, if you guys are looking through the payrolls, I have every one that needs to be signed. And then the bill, um, there's a, um, it's a dumb shot, it's about what, that one used to be signed as well as this one. And then each of these individual payrolls. And this is, I don't know why I said this. You just, um, initial, okay, these are all else initial.
What you got, these?
Um, those are signatures. Just for you.
All of these?
Those are for you, yeah. Um, if we're gonna need, that one, we need the employee signature. That you would sign, where it says apartment heads, signing the apartment heads and power. And set. And now you can, those are the two appointments.
Basically, I need to sign those too, or?
Uh, I think we need to, uh, these are just regular bills and everyone's stuff, so. So you got, who's signing them? Usually it's just that one's place to sign. Special. She does, she doesn't get, uh, switch on. Such a, so, yes, so it was such, it was me, yeah. Okay. A lot.
Yeah, initials.
Yeah.
Every place for another little tab, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to schedule meetings at this point?
Uh, we do, uh, just want you all to know that I'll be out of town the 26th through the first of April. So.
Thank you.
In fact, I'll be out staying.
Have fun. April, January, seventh and the twenty-first?
I will, I will be back.
Okay.
True.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, seven and twenty-first. Are we okay to set May as well, or do you wanna wait on those? Be the fifth and the nineteenth? What's mine?
Yeah, I can just go on, I can avoid it. When we say April seventh and?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. May.
Fifth and nineteenth.
That was fine.
Okay, perfect. That'll be half of the windows, and then we'll go over there. Is that?
Yes, I want to also, it might be, not sure how many days, but twenty-sixth of June is my, uh, membership.
Okay.
So it's probably, I mean, surely about couple of days, but I don't think it's, uh, it's one night in the last night in the evening.
Okay.
Or how long, I mean, you know, so, and then, true, but I run these computer on, I have a laptop.
Okay.
So I can, we still have to start from house.
Some, some instructions. There you go. I thought, yeah, for a minute, I didn't keep you, I'll look at this.
If you want to go over to the, do these, this beat, or if you wanna wait, um, there's these. The chairperson, letting more, budget more articles, these are just, whoever wants to head them up, because being that you're gonna do a poll, it just means that, that's gonna be.
You wanna do that next time?
Sure, sure. If you guys wanted to forget those, and maybe think of ones that you wanna do, um, I can print this out for you, so you can take it with you.
Okay.
Do you have one?
I don't know if I have one.
Okay. So you're very helpful. Yep. Just kind of make your selections on there, and then I would honestly fill it out a little bit and see which ones we'd like to do, and then you can talk with the board between. And then next, next meeting, I would definitely, I'll chairman. And so there, anything with the boxy lines, I have a chairman type thing, so, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sarah, I want to turn it on to you.
Okay.
So, just, just so, I want to make sure the board knows, twenty-sixth through thirty-first, I'll be in Florida.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Just so, so you know, I am available by phone and you can hear me.
Okay. That's it? I was thinking what's happening up earlier, that's that group that I'm sure, uh, the group, yeah, yeah. Motion first?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. I'm adjourned, alright.
So, you're your first.